of us, the shock has subsided and taking precautions has become secondhand nature. Things have actually become manageable. So it's easy to forget the folks who are still on the front lines of this fight to keep us safe, healthy, and fed. Recently, Councilmember Kern Price delivered a thank you to three local grocery stores, assuring them that we have not forgotten and truly do appreciate them.
Today is really important because we wanted to honor the frontline grocery store workers who have been putting themselves at risk since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we really wanted to show our appreciation for them showing up to work every day and making sure that people in our neighborhood in South Los Angeles have access to fresh fruits and vegetables and groceries even during this pandemic. So today, we're here on the corner of Slauson and Vermont at Superior to provide them with a little token of appreciation.
Right now, it's scary to come to work, but at the same time, we're helping out the community, you know, helping out the customers, what they need, you know, because what's going on right now, it's scary for everyone.
We're providing them with lunch, bags which will include hand sanitizers, face masks, and a number of other items to keep them safe.
It makes us feel appreciated, makes us feel great, you know, that we're out here for a good cause, serving our community, making sure, you know, we have everything they need. We're taking extra precautions for all our customers, you know, we have protocols in place. All our employees take extra precautions to assure that the safety of our customers comes first.
People are encouraged to go to their grocery stores, support their grocery stores, because these are grocery stores that are in our neighborhood and they need our support just like we need them.
From South Los Angeles to the San Fernando Valley, team members from the Office of Council President Nury Martinez were out in full force. Their mission: to spread cool summer fun to the families of CD6. Take a look.
We're here today in Van Nuys at the Mid Valley Family YMCA. Council President Martinez thought we really need to have an event where we're giving kids some things to do during the summer, some waterwork stuff, you know, to get wet, and sprinklers and water balloons and even fans. So really trying to give some summer relief to the entire family in Council District 6.
I'm here to get toys for my siblings. They're bored at home and with all this COVID, you know, situation, they're just struggling, bored at home, so I wanted to get them a few toys.
It's going to keep the kids busy with the activities since they're not in school or they can't go anywhere to visit family and friends, so.
As someone who grew up in a working poor family, she knows very well sort of the limitations and of resources that a lot of these families have.
It helps parents that can't afford or the time to get out to get their children anything.
I think it's awesome because some people don't have the resources to get toys or food for their children. I think these events are amazing.
Anytime you can take something else off their plate, that's another expense they don't have to pay for.
Nury Martinez is doing this for our community. I think that's just, we feel very blessed to have things like this.
There's no government response like local government response. They can get in touch with our office at (213) 437-7006 or go to nury-martinez.com.
To know that there's people out there that care. It's very nice, it's a very nice thing.
It's been 14 years and even with the pandemic lurking, the Mar Vista Farmers Market shows no signs of slowing down when it comes to bringing fresh produce to its community.
Hello and welcome to the 14th Annual Mar Vista Farmers Market Palooza. This year, the celebration is a lot more subdued than usual, but this year, because of COVID, we've decided we have to celebrate safely and appropriately. And it's a little more subdued around here than usual, so we're all trying to chew away the virus and celebrate and have a good time at the same time. Mar Vista's always had one of the best farmers markets, so coming here, I think they're doing a great job with keeping everybody apart. And I think for everyone's overall health, I think it's a great thing to do. And I feel safe. We have a lot more staff than usual because of all the COVID regulations and necessary safety precautions. So as you can see, rather than have people just arrive at the market en masse, they have to filter through our system. We operate with a strict head count. We're also keeping an eye on various areas of the market to make sure that we're not over capacity.
Since COVID hit, it's just become more important to me to have good vegetables, you know, like really clean vegetables and a diversity of fruits and vegetables because that helps build your immunity. I feel safer shopping outdoors where there's air blowing than going to a crowded supermarket inside.
But it's pretty significant. Instead of just a rolling wave of people entering the market from various points, everybody has to come through one channel. This market was way ahead of the curve that was mandated when there were some other markets that really weren't being operated to the best of the ability to stay ahead of COVID. We had a plan from day one and kept refining that plan along with information that we get from the mayor's office or LA County Board of Health.
The LA Department of Public Works is responsible for the design, construction, renovation, and operation of public projects running from bridges to libraries and from sewers to streetlights. And there is a brand new board president ready to take on all the numerous challenges that come with the role. Maria Hall Brown was able to have a nice chat with the very busy board president, Greg Good.
You have taken over this role in the middle of an international crisis of magnitude that nobody can predict. How are you going to do this?
Angelenos rightfully expect that we take care of business, right? Again, that the trees are getting trimmed, that the trash is getting picked up, that potholes are being fixed. And we will do that, and I'm fully committed to that. And Kevin was exemplary in making sure those things happen.
You mentioned Kevin James. He was in the role for seven years. He's seen a lot of changes. He's incorporated a lot of strategies, you know. Has it been a good handoff? Did he handle the baton well? And what does he tell you?
The transition's been fantastic. Kevin created enormous shoes to fill. He was a great president of the Board of Public Works. The mayor, me, every Angeleno should be very grateful for the service he provided. I believe in over-communication. Kevin James believes in the same, and I will rely heavily on him, and hopefully he'll rely on me with his new work, too.
How do you envision things? How do you want it to see? You just said you want an Ecuador City that is, you know, obviously sustainable and has, you know, a forward-thinking approach. How do you see it?
So much of what Public Works does, if it happens and is executed well, should fly under the radar screen. Ideally, we don't need to be thinking about the trash getting picked up. We don't need to be thinking about whether the streetlight is a high-voltage light that needs to be converted to an LED light. Ideally, we don't have to know those things, and they just happen the way they should. So that's the city that I hope the Department of Public Works will continue to contribute to.
And lots and lots of trees.
And lots and lots of trees. Very excited about that. And trees in places where heretofore there has been very limited canopy. There's a real, you know, imbalance in terms of where you have dense tree canopy. And trees are superheroes, you know. They create shade, they keep places cool, and they capture carbon. And so, you know, frontline communities that have been, you know, victims of environmental injustice over the years need to have as many trees as other communities. And so, yes, we'll be working on that, too.
So it'd be good for people, you know, to hear about things that are happening in their own community?
Absolutely. You know, we're an open door. And certainly on that sort of, those basic things that happen to us every day, including reporting potholes, et cetera, et cetera, go to my LA 311, and we're on it.
When COVID-19 first hit, it seemed to be a disease that struck the elderly and people who were immunocompromised. We now know that anyone can carry or contract COVID-19. Here's a story about one SoCal family that's not taking any chances. For them, it's a no-brainer. Everyone gets tested.
Today, the councilmember's office partnered up with the mayor's office, the fire department, and Hackla to provide free onsite testing for COVID-19. In talking with the fire department, they say that this site has been one of the busiest ones as of yet.
We decided to come this morning to get tested for COVID as a family because we want to protect our elders. We want to protect my mom, my dad, my husband also has his mom and his dad, and we want to make sure that we protect them.
We all thought it was important. We all thought that it was better to do it now, take the time to do it, like my wife said, so that we can keep everybody, keep ourselves safe, and then keep others safe
I kind of was a little scared because I thought we were going to do the swabs that they usually do through the nose, but through the mouth, I felt a little more comfortable doing it. And also, it was pretty, it wasn't really scary, so if anyone else were to get tested, I would say this kind of experience, it isn't traumatizing, and I recommend like doing this type of testing.
We might be in a good health situation, but we're protecting others.
I would highly recommend it because it is for your own safety and the people around
San Fernando Valley Drive-In Movies return. Cruisin' Takeout Bob's revs up great eats, and Eagle Rock brings school supplies to a drive-thru. All this next on Things to Do.
Every Friday in Northridge since 2009, Cruisin' Takeout Bob's has been the local cruise night for hot rodders and classic car enthusiasts. But with the recent stay-at-home orders for our state, business for Bob's has slowed, and the start to cruise season was delayed. Now that self-quarantine laws are relaxing, we can begin cruising. Bob's is now open for carryout orders and even car hop service. So bring out your hot rod, be it a classic cruiser or a modern muscle. Enjoy the warmer weather and join others in our local community Fridays for Bob's Menu. Cruisin' Takeout Bob's happens every Friday beginning at 4:00 PM. 8876 Corbin Avenue in Northridge. For details, check out their listing on Facebook Events. Over the last three years, My Valley Pass has had the great pleasure of bringing together movie fans from all over LA to the Lake Balboa Complex in the San Fernando Valley for a spectacular drive-in movie experience. This August, My Valley Pass is moving its signature San Fernando Valley Summer Drive-In Nights to the Westfield Fashion Square Mall in Sherman Oaks. Don't miss this chance to have a night out at the movies, totally socially distanced in your own vehicle. Family films to be screened include The Sandlot, Grease, Jurassic Park, and La Bamba. San Fernando Valley Drive-In happens at the Westfield Fashion Square, 14006 Riverside Drive. For more information, visit tickets.myvalleypass.com. Eagle Rock families are invited to pick up free school supplies for your children at the Get Ready for School Supply Drive. Eagle Rock Baptist Church is hosting a School Supply Drive-Thru on Saturday, August 15th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the Eagle Rock Baptist Church parking lot. We're giving away free school supplies for students of all stripes. For those with supplies to spare, you are also encouraged to donate by Thursday, August 13th. You can find a list of donation items on their Facebook event listing. For more details about the Get Ready for School Supply Drive, visit eaglerockbaptist.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goal. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us, and a reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 11th. I'm Nury Martinez, a president to the city council. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Councilmember Bonas is excused. Buscagno.
Here.
Sidiyo.
Present.
Harris Thassen. Corretts.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
Weston.
Weston here.
Twelve members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the August 5th, 2020 minutes?
Okay, Mr. Lee moves and Mr. Rue seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Rodriguez moves and Mr. Price seconds next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Lee, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this morning?
I'd be honored to. Colleagues, if you'd just rise with me to salute our flag. Joining with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order, next.
Madam President, there are requests to continue item 1G to August 25th and item 11 continued to August 11th.
Actually, today is August 11th.
Oh, I'm sorry, 18.
Thank you. Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Anything else?
Items 1 through 12 are items noted for public hearing. For item number 1, the department recommends receiving and filing items D, H, and J inasmuch as the fees were paid and confirming the liens for A through C, E, F, and I. Items 13 and 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 14 on the desk for an amendment. Items 15 through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 27 is an item scheduled for closed session. Item 27 was waived from the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee. On the supplemental agenda, items 28 and 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, those items are now before us, members. If you can please raise your virtual hand so I can call on you if you want to call any of the items special or you want to introduce an amending motion on any of the items. Mr. Sidiyo? Mr. Sidiyo, did you want to call any of the items special or introduce an amending motion?
The answer is yes. Would you like me to do that now? I have a series of items for you, mostly cleanup. We would like to call special for item 1D.
1D?
Uh huh, items 16 and 17.
16 and 17, are these just special? Or you want to introduce an amending motion?
Special.
Okay. Please continue.
16 and 17.
Mm-hmm.
And items 28 and 29.
And items 20 and 29?
Correct, no, 28 and 29, I'm sorry.
And these are all just special, correct?
Correct.
Members, any other specials or amended motions? Mr. Price?
I need to recuse myself from item 27, closed session item.
Yes, we have you done to recuse yourself on item 27, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I do have an amending motion on item 14. Going to go ahead and read that into the record. I move that the World's Election and Intergovernmental Relations Committee report relative to the 2020 redistricting process be amended to add the following recommendations. Eight, request all appointing authorities to provide a resume and other relative background information for their appointee and the information be publicly accessible. Nine, require all commissioners to complete an ethics training prior to taking office. Ten, instruct the city clerk to provide demographic information on the city's redistricting commission, similar to the demographic information reports that the clerk provides for other city commissions. Eleven, instruct the city attorney to draft an ordinance requiring commissioners to disclose all ex parte communications between commissioners and elected officials and their staff. Twelve, request the city's redistricting commission to avoid hiring current or former city staff that have been out of city service for under a year. Thirteen, request the city redistricting commission, when possible, to provide more than 72-hour notice of a public hearing. And fourteen, request the city's redistricting commission, when possible, to conduct evening and weekend public hearings to encourage participation for working families in the redistricting process. And my second is Mr. Buscagno. Members, are there any other specials or amended motions you want to introduce? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open our public comment. Madam Clerk, can you please read out the dialing information for our public?
Yes, as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and then press the pound sign. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. Again, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466. Press pound, press pound again when prompted for participant ID number. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak.
Madam President.
Mr. City Attorney, go ahead and read our speaking instructions for the members of our public.
Thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items first before providing general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or against right off-topic, the president will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and will move on to the next speaker. We will take 30 minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the council meeting. If you're also listening to the council meeting on your computer, channel 35 or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There's a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast on those devices and it will cause a lot of confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Okay, just go ahead and take the first caller.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, Daniel Gus, City Watch LA, item number 19 and general public comment.
You have one minute for each, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. On item number 19, I don't see why Mr. Weston and Mr. Price both aren't recusing themselves from this because they have long financial times and long endorsement ties to the Brotherhood Crusade, which by the way, nothing wrong with the organization, but they should recuse themselves from this as records reflect that they have long-term supportive relationships with them. They should recuse themselves from item number 19 unless the city council would like for me to dig up those records and publicize them and then publicly ask, why did Weston not recuse himself? Why did Price not recuse himself? Why did any council member with a relationship with the recipient of the city's largesse, and by city, I mean the taxpayers' largesse, why are these council members not recusing themselves from this item? We know it's going to pass unanimously because all of your voting records, your tally system, they all default to I, but the outcome won't change, but they need to recuse themselves. Onto my general public comment. Council members, you're apparently giving away the West Valley Shelter to the Best Friends Organization and there is this ruse going on that public input is being considered here and there. Well, my question is, Mr. Corretts wants to be city controller. He was disingenuous with the public about giving away the shelter or the pound, I shouldn't call that a shelter, the pound where Best Friends is now. Why is the city withholding public records regarding what's going to inevitably happen with the West Valley Shelter? The question for Mr. Lee is, this is in your community, Mr. Lee. Where are you defending the services that this neighborhood is going to lose when this goes into the occupancy of Best Friends? Why is Mr. Lee not standing up and finding out where will these services be provided if the city no longer occupies the West Valley Shelter? And lastly, for Mr. Krikorian, Best Friends rakes in consistently more than $50 million a year. Why are the taxpayers, especially in this financial crisis?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Sam Sachs. I'd like to speak on item 20, 23 and give general public comment.
You have two minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Real quick, I live in CD5, Paul Corretts here like an absolute sham of representative. If you think you're going to win a city controller race, you have other things coming. Item 23, um, excuse me, item 23, we do not need more funding for LAPD overtime. That's pretty obvious, I'll be short here because I know there are a lot of other people on the line. We need funding for services, not police. We don't have cooling centers in our district, yet we can continuously, like, we can't find funding for that, but we continuously can find funding for police overtime. Doesn't make sense. Item 20, excuse me there, item 20, again, you don't seem to be listening to your constituents and to the people in the streets. In Chinatown, there were calls to cancel rent. There were no calls to renew the Business Improvement District. I don't see what you think you're accomplishing for the people you represent here. Clearly, you're more interested, like your council member colleague Jose Huizar, in lining your own pockets and working with developers to accomplish that end than you are in representing the people of Los Angeles. General public comment, along those lines, in order to best represent the people of Los Angeles, redistricting, excuse me, redistricting needs to be done justly and openly. I want to uphold the demands made by a letter signed on by Unrig LA, Ground Game, and many others. I know that that item has already met its requirement for public comment. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'm Nimi from CD4. I'd like to speak on items 20, 23 and give general public comment.
Okay, you have two minutes for your items and then one minute for your general public comment, go ahead.
Regarding item 20, while many Angelenos are facing eviction and wondering how they're going to put food on the table, I don't understand why we have an item about bids. We need to be canceling rents, not approving bids. Item 23, this is of course Paul Corretts transferring 70K out of the General City Fund to fund the police? Even though everyone keeps demanding to defund the police? Paul, maybe you didn't understand it the first few hundred times. We want to defund the police. Defund, say it with me, defund the police. Onto my general comment, you canceled the homelessness and poverty meeting for Thursday, so there's no time to talk about it. Homelessness is one of our city's major crises, but you won't even try to use your power to do something about it. David Lu, where are you? We've been out here every day and I haven't seen you at all. You've been invited to the Valley of Change. You were invited to help pack and distribute healthy lunches for those in need on Saturday. Where were you? Don't go on Twitter and say you have been a pioneer for homelessness. All you've done is PR and make this crisis worse. Show up or get out. Do any of you even know your houses, constituents? Some of their names are TJ, Amy, Bailey, Drew, Heaven, Alex, Annabelle. Three unhoused people die every day in LA. Don't let them be next. Cancel rent, I yield my time.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Sean McMorris, I'd like to speak on item 14 and general public comment.
You have one minute for your item and one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Thank you. Democracy is dependent upon equal and fair representation and impartial institutions. Gerrymandering undermines these principles. LA's current redistricting process is independent and name only and reforms must happen to restore trust in these halls. The ideal is a wholly independent redistricting model like that of the state, county, or the Iowa model. But until then, reforms to LA's current model can and should take place ASAP to prevent corruption, political revenge, and constituent cherry picking. Voters should choose their elected leaders, not the other way around. Common Cause, which I work for, has co-signed the Unrig LA Coalition Letter, which outlines a series of reforms that can be implemented via ordinance before LA's new redistricting process begins. We hope that you will read them and act upon as many as possible. You get one shot at this. Please do the right thing for the residents of LA and for democracy. I'll now take my general public comment. I just want to add that we appreciate the amendments that were just made by Council President Nury Martinez. We also hope that you will consider some of the other amendments we recommended in our coalition letter, particularly those pertaining to potential conflicts of interest. And in terms of applicants providing their resume, we would hope that they would disclose some of these potential conflicts or relationships with council members in addition to that resume as well. We hope you'll look at independent staffing as well as independent council and we're glad that you're addressing ex parte communications, but we hope that you will even consider simply banning ex parte communications. Lastly, please consider the AdHoc Redistricting Committee. That said, Common Cause is looking forward to working with you on the council and eventually getting to a completely independent redistricting commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Doe and I'd like to speak on item number 20 as well as general public comment. Number 20, the Chinatown bid literally failed to get the number of petitions needed to renew, but you're just going to override all of that and just let them through? This is absolutely ridiculous. The bid is essentially a private security force and they don't do anything for small businesses. CDED, the organization that I represent or am part of today, has done more for small businesses and they are completely grassroots funded. Bid is just this money hog that is like a private security force. You need to not let them, I completely oppose item 20 and renewing their city contract because they don't do anything for small businesses. General comment, you need to cancel eviction, you need to cancel the rent and defund the police. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hey, my name is Sabrina Johnson and I'd like to speak on all items, please, and general public comment.
Great, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Appreciated. Okay, I'm going to go a little out of order. Let's start with item number 23. Corretts wants to move 70K to fund police overtime in his district. Lee, who is always the fascist, seconds. We have been asking for the exact opposite of this. In fact, like thousands, tens of thousands of Angelenos have been asking you for the exact opposite of this for months. I don't understand why you're still doing this. Paul Krikorian, when you said, "Don't worry, we can continue to make changes to the budget all year", this should not have been what you meant. Moving on to item number 15, and I just want to let you know that I'm going to keep doing this. Every time you agendize REAP stuff, I'm going to keep doing this. I'm going to keep calling in and telling the public exactly what you're doing. So this is for the public. The rent escrow account program, we're going to do a little bit of a teach-in here. When a rental property is deemed unsafe to inhabit, the city can take over control of the property temporarily via something called the Rent Escrow Account Program, REAP. When this happens, tenants stop paying their rent to the landlord and begin paying half of their normal rent to the city instead. That money goes into an escrow account until there's enough to make the necessary repairs to make the property habitable. Once that's done, a property can be removed from the program and tenants go back to paying their full rent to the landlord. So here's why I hate that you're doing this today. A, the rent is about to double for everyone living in these properties during a pandemic. And B, instead of agendizing any renter protections at all, the LA City Council is prioritizing handing control of these properties back over to the most egregious slum lords in Los Angeles. Real cool, real cool. So you're making it abundantly clear that your priority is not to actually help the people of the city of Los Angeles, but in fact, to make sure that landlords continue to collect a paycheck during this time. You're not fooling anybody. Um, all right, and then jumping over to number 20, the Chinatown bid. Jesus fucking Christ, this is basically funding the police. It's just private police. Like, bids are just fucking private thugs that exist to harass unhoused people and push them away from gentrifying neighborhoods. What the fuck is wrong with you people? What the fuck is wrong with you people? I don't even have anything more to say about this. I, I'm gonna give up my general public comment because I'm so angry with you all that I'm shaking. But just know that next time you agendize REAP instead of renter protections, I'm gonna call in again and again and again and again. I yield my time. Fuck all of you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
So effectively.
Hello?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Is this me?
Yes, which items do you want to speak on?
Yeah, it's Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on number 20, 14, and general public comment.
Great, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Yep, I'll be brief on number 20 because I've mentioned my opinions on business improvement districts with you many a time. Just want to echo the sentiments that, you know, these private security forces often do things that we would never let LAPD do. So if we're talking about defunding the police, we shouldn't be replacing them with really brutal private security forces that have no accountability. I'd like to turn to item 14 and give my genuine thanks to the council president and council member Buscaino for seconding some really important changes to our redistricting process. Over recent years, this council has embraced moving towards higher turnout elections, overhauled our city matching funds program, and included really key measures to ensure grassroots accessibility. And now this really does help improve the redistricting process and gives a fair shake. I, I think on the demographic issue and representation of our commission, recently council members Sadio, Kevin DeLeón, Wesson, and former mayor Villarosa have spoken on the need for Latino representation. And this information is important. If you look at our last redistricting commission, six out of 21 were women. Six out of 21 were Latino. So if we're gonna criticize the state and their commission, we should look at ourselves as well. And I'm happy to hear that there's gonna be some more transparency on what the applicants are providing. I, I think when it comes to ex parte communications, a ban may have some obstacles, but if we're going with disclosure, I think it's important to ensure that we don't have any loopholes there so we can ensure anything that's being communicated is actually in the public record. Independent counsel would be something that would really help strengthen the independence and expertise of this commission. There was a mention of 72-plus hours for public disclosure of meeting agendas. We were, in our letter, hoping for 14 days as the state follows for the Bagley-Kean Act. It's really, really important to ensure that community organizations, local groups in your district have the ability to turn out representation for these meetings. So please heed that advice. Language justice has been something this council has struggled with in numerous occasions. So please, I, I hope the city clerk and any staffing makes firm consideration of language justice and the complications of COVID. The most important thing that I did not hear in the amendments was any mention of removal power. And currently, council members, elected officials, being able to remove a commissioner at will wholly undermines the process. This is something that, you know, we need to have some sort of protection here. I, I think a very basic, straightforward protection would be that removal of a redistricting commissioner requires a majority vote of the redistricting commission or the council, whoever. I think that should be a bigger decision than one elected official. That is not something addressed in the charter, so you have full ability to address that. Redistricting is never gonna be pretty. But these steps are really important for ensuring that we have a process people can have faith in, something that doesn't divide our communities, doesn't result in litigation, and doesn't divide the council.
Thank you.
So thank you for taking these really important steps. I really genuinely appreciate them.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Gina Viola, and I'd like to speak on item 20, 23, 27, and general public comment.
Okay, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Item 20, you have the power to halt all evictions. Instead, you're working to gentrify Chinatown with renewal of the bid that you didn't even get enough signatures for. Item 23, more money transferred to the LAPD. We will see this over and over again at every meeting all year long until the LAPD has recouped your supposed budget cuts made to appease a growing public outcry to defund the police. The funding all lands in the LAPD coffers, but the work is done by organizations on the street. What is the city council doing? Item 27, this council has no business conducting anything in closed session. You have at least one council member under indictment, and clearly more of that is to come. General public comment, it is clear that you have zero interest in what the public has to say. Forcing us to give comment before you've even discussed anything on the agenda just proves that point. Our only option to speak on anything you've discussed is to do so on social media. You need to take steps to find a way to receive comments more meaningfully because this is not it. I am very tired of living in a wealthy city that relies on the backs of organizations out in the streets doing your jobs for you. K-Town4All, LA Can, Street Watch LA are actually making a difference, the city's biggest issue, while you sit in council meetings and ignore them all. Defund the police and fund the organizations out doing your jobs. We reject the expansion of the LAPD in the shape of what you call "community policing." Community policing killed Ezell Ford six years ago today. At long last, I'm going to yield my time.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Devin Manny, and I would like to submit general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Devin. I reside in the District of Council Vampire Mitch O'Farrell. I, I feel like the people have been relatively hard on you all the past month or so, you know, pushing you to do really anything about the looming eviction crisis or the plague of police brutality in the city. Or, I mean, God forbid, actually helping Angelinos not die in droves. But looking at the agenda for today, I get it. You guys are swamped.
Thank you, Speaker.
About items 2 through 10, to improve and maintain street lighting districts in a seat formerly occupied by your soon-to-be imprisoned colleague Jose Huizar? Do they even understand item 23? A motion by Jabba the Hutt cosplayer Paul Corretts to give $70,000 to the LAPD for overtime? I don't know how you guys handle all this pressure. Hell, if I was in your position, I'd have walked slowly into the ocean long ago. Keep up the amazing work, council members, and don't let the haters get you down. Paul Corretts, eat shit. I yield my time.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker, are you there?
Hello, yes.
Which items would you like?
Uh-huh.
Please, please turn down the volume on your other devices. Which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, we would like to speak on, uh, general, um...
General public?
General pub, general public comment, yes.
Can you have one minute? Go ahead.
Uh, okay, that, that's too short for us. But before, let's first, our phone number, 714-333-6009. So if you needed to speak to us more about the case. What we are talking about is a really shocking report about Los Angeles Police Department, 12 detectives, illegal criminal actions. They spent five months to investigate auto fraud case. And the 12 detectives and the one Sergeant Joe Tellis, plus Commander Clark in charge of Commercial Crime Section, totally altered the auto fraud case and presented the LADA office with a complete fraudulent investigation. In order to protect the perpetrators, they have personal connections from being prosecuted and also to cause DA to deny the...
Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, I'd like to speak on items 1, 7, 12, 19, basically all items, plus public comment, please.
Okay, you have three minutes for all your items and one minute for general public comment. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, good morning. And welcome back from vacation, the criminally insane Los Angeles City Council. Item number one, placing liens on people's properties again in the middle of a pandemic. When you have stolen $1.2 billion of HHH money, you're placing these burdens on ordinary people that can't pay in ruses for REAP, et cetera, to take their properties. Criminal activity, as the caller before said. Item number seven has Sleazy Marquez Dawson's name on it. So that has to be something of fraud. Item number 12, liquor licenses under Huizar's name. This has Wesson, dog-faced, corrupt Herb Wesson's name all over it. Why is this even coming up on the council agenda? It's, it's as vacant council member. Liquor licenses you're approving? Goddamn people in the middle of a pandemic where people are dying and starving to death and being evicted? It's unbelievable. Wesson and Price with the Vision Theater. We will be sending this and a question and demands to the FBI why you have not recused your criminal corrupt selves from this item. The Vision Theater, Brotherhood Crusade, you've, like the caller before, you have taken lots of money, just like Wesson has taken vaping money, killing children. That's criminally corrupt, criminally insane Herb Wesson. LAPD funding, you people don't get it. We want funding for people, not police being brutalized. Corretts and the rest of you criminals. The people are dying in the street. You have stolen all the HHH money, building these units at $600,000 apiece. One at $700,000 apiece, they were 400 square feet. What is wrong with you people? The people want representation. We want all of you voted out, all. All of you, gone. The people want to live. You just want to line your pockets. Disgusting. I'll go onto my public comment, please. Hello?
Yes, please begin.
We're still here, sir. You have your minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. As the caller before stated, this is public look-up vote trading. And the votes that the LA City Council takes, almost 100%, 99-point-something-something percent, are all yeses. They vote for each other. You vote for mine, I'll vote for your, your motion. So why do they even show up? This is all, and vote trading, by the way, is illegal. So why do they even show up to the city council? This sham of a public spectacle? So they can call item special and they can campaign and, and make themselves look good. Well, you don't look good. You're all criminals. Sleazy Dawson is evicting the FIBA Center, Culture Center, Dorset Village, almost 1,000 people he's evicting for his billionaire...
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yeah, this is Richie Serjanko from Sunrise Movement LA and the People's City Council. I'd like to speak on item 23, 20, and general public comment.
Okay, you have two minutes for your items and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Shout out, Mike Bonin had a great, great town hall last night. I hope you all were able to tune in. It was really interesting. It's directly related to item 23. The town hall last night was about, you know, defunding the police and reimagining public safety. Item 23 is here, Paul Corretts wanting to transfer $70,000 to police overtime budget. Let us, everyone listening, let's not forget that Paul Corretts is a liberal white supremacist, and he really hates when people say Paul Corretts is a liberal white supremacist. He really pushes back against that. So whenever anyone calls in and addresses Paul Corretts, make sure to address him as liberal white supremacist, Paul Corretts. Or, I forget who the caller was, I think it was Devin. Great nickname, cosplayer.
Can we get more clearly back on the items, Speaker?
Absolutely, yeah. The $70,000 to the police overtime budget, it's related to, you know, defunding the police, which we've been pushing for the past, you know, four months or so. Paul Corretts, I was actually arrested and attacked and targeted by the LAPD in your district at Third and Fairfax. So this is a very personal issue for me that you want to give the police more money, even though I was tackled by two police officers, dragged and hit by them right in your district. That doesn't matter to you. You, you're a liberal white supremacist and you want to give them more money. Item 20, the Chinatown bid. Sabrina Johnson really took care of this for me. But, you know, private police, if this isn't defunding the police, bids are just private police, and they're gonna push unhoused people out of that, out of that area. And then to general public comment, yo, it is August. We were begging you in April to cancel rent, to put a real eviction moratorium in, to house unhoused people. It's August. It is August. Have you guys not seen the report about how many people are going to be evicted next week? You aren't doing anything. You are literally not doing anything. And people are about to, hundreds of thousands of people in Los Angeles are about to be evicted because you aren't doing anything. What is wrong with you? How do you sleep at night? How do you sleep at night? There's landlords on the council right now? Half the council is landlords. How do you sleep at night? There are people gonna be evicted, hundreds of thousands of people out on the streets. You guys aren't doing shit. How do you feel? How does that make you feel as a person? Not as a city council member, as a person. You should feel awful. You should feel like a bad person. You should, you should stay up all night knowing that hundreds of thousands of people are gonna be on the streets because you're inaction. This is on you. Do something about it. I yield my time. Fuck you, Paul Corretts.
Thank you, sir. That concludes speakers for public comment for our agenda today. Just go ahead and vote on a few items. Okay, Madam Clerk, what items are we voting on?
The first vote should be on item 1H and J inasmuch as this, the owners, the fees have been paid and the department recommends receiving and filing. Also, items 1A through C, E, F, I, 2 through 10, 12, 13, 15 through 26 are available for voting.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on these items.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes, these items are adopted.
Next, Madam President. Item 14 is available for, for voting. The amendment has been read into record.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes, the item is adopted as amended.
Okay, what's the next item?
Madam President, the council has options. Items 1D, 16, 17, 28, and 29 was called special by Councilmember Sidiel. Or item 27 was also called special.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with the first one, Mr. Sidiel called special, 1D.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to move to eliminate the late fee charge, the accumulated interest associated with this case, and to conform this lien to be then received and filed. The goal here is to eliminate the lien on the tenant.
Second.
In its entirety.
All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes, the item is adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item 16, called special by Mr. Sidiel. Mr. Sidiel, item 16?
Yes, Madam Chair, item 16, we'd like to adopt the CAO report.
Is there a second, Mr. Sidiel?
I'm going to go ahead and second that. Just go ahead and prepare to vote on this item.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Aye.
13 ayes, the item is adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item 17, called special by Mr. Sidiel.
Yes, again, move to adopt the CAO report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Go ahead and open the roll on item 17.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian. Lee.
Aye.
Greg Corian, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Corian. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes, the item is adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move on to item 28, called special by Mr. Sidiel.
Yes, Madam Chair, we move to move this matter urgent forthwith.
Second.
Buscaino, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Madam President.
You need two votes on this item.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and vote on the item and then vote on the urgent forthwith. Go ahead and open the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Greg Corian, aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Corian.
13 ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the urgent forthwith on this item. Let's open the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
12 ayes, the item is adopted urgent forthwith.
Okay, let's move on to item number 29. This was also called special by Mr. Sidiel.
Alas, Madam Chair, thank you so much for your indulgence. This is just an addition to recommendations. It's not an amendment. I am requesting a verbal report back every two weeks on this grant process to the ad hoc COVID committee and a monthly report on the home key site acquisitions, occupancy, and operations so that we can continue to move this process forward.
Second.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Go ahead and call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Yes.
Wesson.
Aye.
13 ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 27. There's been a request from Mr. Price to recuse himself from this item. Mr. Buscaino, would you like to speak on this item? This was hurting your committee, or I should say it was waived. Waive consideration of this matter from your committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee waived this item before you. It's a routine settlement. It could be considered an open session unless any members have any questions.
Members, are there any questions before we vote on this item? Okay, see, now we can just ask Mr. Price to please...
Yes, let's have Mr. Price.
Make sure he's off the board.
Yeah, off the board.
Mr. City Attorney, anything else you want to add to this item?
Well, I'd like to read Mr. Buscaino's motion, which I believe will require a second, and then summarize the terms of the settlement before we vote.
Second.
Mr., hold on, we haven't read into the record, Mr. Sidiel, but...
So, Mr. Buscaino's motion concerns the parking spot, PS... Excuse me, TPS, the parking spot versus City of Los Angeles. It's a SEQA writ litigation regarding the land side access modernization plan, LAMP, for LAX. The moving clauses are, one, authorize the city attorney to accept the following terms of settlement, approve the Board of Airport Commissioners Resolution of June 18, 2020, approving and recommending council approve the settlement attached to BOAX Resolution, which result in dismissal of the parking spots, LAMP SEQA action. And two, authorize the city attorney or designated to make necessary technical adjustments, or adjustments, subject to the approval of the city administrative officer and authorize the controller to implement the instructions. And as a summary of the main terms broadly stated of the settlement, they would be as follows. First, require the parking spot, TPS, to do the following. One, dismiss the LAMP SEQA writ action. Two, release all claims relating to the LAMP SEQA writ litigation. Three, covenant not to sue or bring action that could delay, prevent, or materially impede the approval, construction, implementation, or operation of LAMP. Excuse me. Or of projects that would be developed in the PTMA, which is the passenger terminal modernization area, or any future activity that is part of PTMA project activities. Four, covenant not to sue regarding decisions made during the period from the effective date of the agreement until the West Intermodal Transportation Facility, the ITF West, opens for passenger service with respect to the allocation of Central Terminal Area, CTA, access to the TPS shuttles or other courtesy vehicles. And in return, TPS would receive, first, access to the CTA until at least the latter of May 31, 2023, or the date upon which the ITF West station opens for passenger service. Two, CTA access partly with courtesy vehicles and hotel shuttles after the APM opens to ITF West until January 1, 2025. And finally, third, reimbursement of up to $850,000 for costs directly related to modifications to ingress and egress to the TPS central facility necessitated by LAMP. I believe we need a second. Was that Mr. Sidiel?
That was Mr. Sidiel.
Thank you. So I believe we can vote now.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item.
Bloomingfield.
Go ahead and open the roll.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Price is recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
12 ayes, the motion is adopted.
Madam President, for the record, the clerk needs to announce that regarding items 2 through 10, the street lighting districts, the public hearing is now closed for 2 through 10. The tabulation of ballots shall take place in space 300 of 555 Ramirez Street on Wednesday, August 12, at 10:00 a.m. To access the live stream, join Zoom meeting ID 95038722539. The passcode is capital A, four, capital S, little k, little i, capital Q. The ballot tabulation results will be announced on Tuesday, September 1, 2020.
Okay, anything else?
No, Madam President.
Okay, there's, it's been brought to my attention we need to consider item 29. CAO has a amendment?
First vote is to reconsider 20...
Item 29.
The first vote is to suspend the rules since it was adopted forthwith. So let me read the roll call to suspend the rules. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes.
The next vote should be to reconsider item 29. Let me read the roll. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
13 ayes.
Madam President, item 29 is now before the council.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Chavez. Did you want to read this, the amendment into the record?
Yes, good morning, Yolanda Chavez with the CAO's office. So the only amendment is that to the authorizing resolution and the amount of funds you're going to allow us to apply to the state for. So instead of a maximum award of $250 million, we would request that you allow the City of Los Angeles as a co-applicant with the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles as the lead applicant to apply for up to $265 million. The extra 15 million is for operating subsidies that we can receive for operating costs for up to two years for any of the sites that are successful. So that is the amendment to the authorizing resolution that we would like you to approve. So it just increases the amount by 15 million.
Okay, I just want to make, I just want to ask you something really quickly. So is the money coming from the state? Is that correct?
Right, so that would be our total application to the state of up to 265 million.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidiel.
Sidiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Greg Corian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Yes.
Weston?
Weston, aye.
Thirteen ayes, item is adopted as amended.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to verbal motions, Madam Clerk. How many do you have?
Yes, there are seven verbal motions to read into the record.
Okay, why don't you start with the first one?
Uh, the first one is introduced by Councilmember Sidio. This is to be referred to the Health, Education, Neighborhood, Parks, Arts, and River Committee. This requests the Film LA to report on how the city and Film LA can do more to push for equity for all in the film industry, including Latinos, African-Americans, Asians, and women. Additionally, it requests to report on the feasibility of using CD1 for a pilot program. And a seconder? I believe that was seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Correct.
Okay, next motion?
The next motion is introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson. This instructs the city engineer to report with recommendations to temporarily close the alley adjacent to 3420 West Lawson Avenue, westerly of Crenshaw Boulevard between West Lawson Avenue and West 58th Place. This is to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee, and a seconder is required.
Who's the second? Is there a second to this motion?
And second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you. The next motion has been introduced by Councilmember Bloomingfield. This is to be referred to the Energy, Climate Change, and Environmental Justice Committee. This instructs the Department of Building and Safety, with the assistance of the Bureau of Engineering and Sanitation, to prepare a report with recommendations relative to new construction projects and their impacts on stormwater drainage. And a seconder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sidio, next.
Thank you. A commendatory resolution has been presented by Councilmember Bloomingfield. This is to proclaim that September 2020 is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Los Angeles.
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. You're next.
Thank you. The next verbal motion is referred to council. Uh, it is a motion introduced by Councilmember Sidio to be placed on the next council agenda relative to authorizing the Bureau of Engineering to accept a contribution in the amount of $50,000 from Metabolic Studio for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers review of the Metabolic Studios Section 404 and 408 applications for the bending the river back into the city project, also known as the Water Wheel Project. Is there a second to this motion?
Second by Mr. O'Farrell.
Next is a motion introduced by Councilmember Rue, referred to the Ad hoc COVID Committee relative to the Chief Legislative Analyst, City Administrative Officer, and Economic Workforce Development Department to report back on the feasibility of implementing up to $100 million City of Los Angeles Paycheck Protection Program for small businesses within the city limits. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Buscaino? Next?
The next is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Rue, referred to the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee relative to including in the city's 2019-2020 State Legislative Program support for AB 1253 Santiago, as amended, which would increase taxes for high-income earners to generate more resources for essential state services. Is there a second to...
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris Dawson.
And that is all the verbals?
Okay, um, let me go, let me go back to the members. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. I, um, move with the concurrence of the mayor that by the adoption of the resolution, the City of LA hereby includes in its 2019-20 federal legislative program support for HR 7024, sponsored by Congressmember Nanette Barrigan, the Climate Smart Ports Act, which would establish a $1 billion per year grant program for the purchase of clean energy infrastructure at ports and authorize an additional $50 million a year for the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act program to fund projects that reduce port emissions.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krikorian. Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
That's it, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Okay, thank you. I have two motions to read. Uh, one is sort of a, a response to the shocking article about the illegal short-term rentals this weekend, and it basically says, the moving clause is, I therefore move that, and, and Mr. Rue has decided to second this, therefore move that the council request the city attorney and instruct the Department of City Planning, the Department of Building and Safety, and other relevant city agencies to report on the progress of implementing and enforcing the city's short-term rental ordinances, and advise if more remedies are needed to ensure short-term rental companies and users abide by established law.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rue.
Okay, and then the second one I have is not a, it's a, it's a resolution, and, and Mr. Price has agreed to second it. Uh, and I'll read the moving clause, which is, "Now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor that by adoption of this resolution, the City of Los Angeles hereby includes in the 2019-2020 federal legislative program support for Senate Bill 4482, which is the Booker Portman Act, and it's called the Strengthening Reporting of Actions Taken Against the Normalization of Relations with Israel Act of 2020, which would require the State Department to include a status report on anti-normalization laws in countries covered by the department's Bureau of Near Eastern Affairs in its annual report on human rights practices."
Okay, and then you said your second was Mr. Price. I just need to confirm that, Mr. Price?
Second.
Thank you.
Correct, second.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I have three motions. I'll read the moving clauses. Uh, and this one is, uh, seconded by Mr. Rue. Now therefore be it resolved that the Los Angeles City Council finds that Lithuania's efforts to minimize or even deny its historical involvement in the Holocaust is contrary to a truthful depiction of the Holocaust and its atrocities, and be it further resolved that the City Council denounces Lithuania's efforts toward the historical record, which shows many Lithuanians actively collaborated with Nazi Germany in the assassination of Jewish nationals.
Okay, thank you. And you said your second was Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Rue, can you confirm that?
Yes, I'm seconding it.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Corretts?
I therefore move that the Civil and Human Rights Department, with assistance from the City Administrative Officer and Personnel Department, be directed to report to the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee within 15 days on the department's hiring plan. I further move to exempt the Civil and Human Rights Department from the city's hiring freeze in order to allow the department to quickly and effectively execute its hiring plan, and Mr. Corretts has offered to second this one.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian, thank you. Next, Mr. Corretts?
And, uh, this one is co-presented by Councilmembers Weston and Price, and, uh, Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson has agreed to second. Now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor that by the adoption of this resolution, the City of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2020-2021 federal legislative program support for HR 35, the Emmett Till Anti-Linching Act, which would make lynching a federal crime.
Okay, and that was co-presented by Mr. Weston and Mr. Price. Gentlemen, can you confirm that? Thank you. And seconded by Mr. Harris Dawson?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Any others, Mr. Corretts?
No, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually, I'm reading it in for Councilmember Mike Bonin. I was actually going to be the seconder for this motion. I don't know if I can, since I'm reading it in. If I can, yes. If not, if someone else could second. It reads, "I therefore move that the City Council instruct..."
Okay, Mr. Rue, let me just stop, hold on, Mr. Rue. You cannot introduce a motion on behalf of someone else if you're going to, um, second the motion. It needs to be...
Then if, then if someone else could second it.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll be reading it in for Councilmember Bonin.
Go ahead.
I therefore move that the City of, City Council instruct Dunn, in consultation with the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, the Civil and Human Rights Department, and the Civil and Human Rights Commission, to report back to the City Council with a plan to implement mandatory diversity, equity, and inclusion training, and anti-bias training for all members of Los Angeles neighborhood councils. I further move that the City Council instruct Dunn, in consultation of Board of Neighborhood Commissioners and the Civil Rights, Human, um, Civil and Human Rights Department and the Civil and Human Rights Commission, to report back to the City Council regarding a plan to implement the mayor's executive order number 27 regarding racial equity and city government plans at the neighborhood council level.
Okay, Mr. Rue introduces, on behalf of Mr. Bonin, I need a second.
Second.
By Mr., it was seconded by Mr. Corretts. Any others, Mr. Rue?
No, that's it, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Members, any other verbal motions? You see, none. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Uh, Madam President, for clarification, item number 29 was adopted as amended by motion Martinez-Buscaino, and there is a request for item 29 to go forthwith.
That is correct.
And, uh, the motions that were just read will be posted and referred and online in the City Clerk website shortly after the meeting. Uh, aside from that, the desk is clear.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, any adjourned motions? Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. I must, that we adjourn in memory of Eric Taguchi. On the mo-, on the morning of Sunday, August 9, Mr. Taguchi, Street Services Superintendent with Streets LA, passed away after surgery complications. Eric had been serving the people of Los Angeles for close to 30 years. He'd worked in multiple divisions in the Bureau, including the Street Cleaning Division, where, in addition to his normal duties, he was the trainer for many of the street sweeper equipment operators. He was promoted as a Street Services Supervisor II in the Special Projects Division in 2012, and he supported the Street Maintenance Division in the West Valley uh, until 2014, when he was promoted to Street Services Superintendent I in the Construction Services Division until his recent passing. He contributed to the success of many programs throughout the Bureau, including the Design, Build, Grant-Funded Programs, Vision Zero, Failed Streets, and Measure R, and, and, and the discretionary funded programs. He also provided his, his technical expertise to award contracts for the new cold asphalt technology. Eric was a person with integrity, who was well-liked by his colleagues from all the divisions, uh, where he worked. He was a person that you could rely on to get things done. Everyone talked about his smile. He always had a smile and a positive attitude. He was willing to provide support to anyone who asked for it, and he never hesitated to share his experience with others. He is survived by his wife Eleanor and his three children, daughter Kimmy, and sons Kenji and Ricky. Eric's passing is a big loss to the Streets LA family and to the entire city family. He will be missed tremendously by all. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family, his friends, and the entire Streets LA team. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Sidio?
Yes, Madam Chair, with a heavy heart, I want to acknowledge and adjourn in the memory of Pilad Ogagadoi. She was born October 15, 1938, in the home that her father built on Lancaster Street in the edges of Borah Heights. In 1957, she graduated from Lincoln High School and was chosen by her classmates as one of the Land Street Fabians for her leadership and academic success. After graduating from high school, she, uh, worked as a stenographer for the, uh, Los Angeles Board of Public Works. Uh, later she married and stopped working to become a full-time homemaker. She raised her four children in the city. Uh, later in life, she returned to work for the city. She was a rec assistant at the Eagle Rock Child Care Center, and then later at the Lincoln Heights Senior Center. She probably worked as an advocate for seniors until she passed August 2nd, 2020. Pilad was a selfless person who served others. She was loved and adored by her family and friends, and will be greatly missed by her four children, three son-in-laws, nine grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and the Lincoln Heights seniors. Let me say to you about, uh, Pilad. She was an incredible woman, uh, loved at the, uh, Lincoln Heights Senior Center. Uh, as you know, each year we give away turkeys to the senior, to the Lincoln Heights seniors, and it's one of the biggest events of our office each year. It's the way we kind of kick off the holiday season. And she was always there. She's just such a thoughtful, pleasant, articulate, capable, uh, person, and we were very pleased to have her at the center. I'm, I'm really heartbroken, the fact that she won't be there. She was so sharp and really aware of civic matters and what was going on with the city. And I'm just, I'm shocked. I'm heartbroken and shocked because, um, she seemed so healthy and so, uh, vibrant the last time I saw her. And, um, she will be loved and missed by the entire Lincoln Heights senior community, and obviously by her family, and those of the city family who knew her. So, I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, hello, everyone. This weekend, Los Angeles lost a beloved hero of Griffith Park. If you've visited the Griffith Park Carousel in the past three decades, you might have met the operator, Julio Gostinski. Julio has one of those Los Angeles stories full of light and joy. After immigrating, immigrating here from Peru, he got a job at the Griffith Park Carousel as a teenager. For many, this would just be a summer job. But for Julio, making children smile and brightening the community turned out to be his calling. And he continued operating the carousel for 30 years. He knew the carousel like the back of his hand, giving personalities and stories to each of the carousel's horses, and giving out free rides to returning customers who loved the carousel. Julio made community wherever he went. He brought kindness and care to the people that worked for him, and the Griffith Park that knew staff that knew him, and the countless children who made the memories of his beloved carousel. His, this is a huge loss for Griffith Park. He will be deeply missed and remembered fondly by so many. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee, did you have an adjourned motion?
Apologize. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, uh, today I'd like to adjourn in memory of, uh, former Chief Legislative Analyst and DDP General Manager, Ron Deaton. Uh, Ron Deaton was born in Long Beach on January 12, 1943, and after attending college, he took a job here with the city with the Department of Water and Power in 1965. Then in 1976, he transferred out of DDP and began working in the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. In, uh, 1993, he became the chief, uh, chief legislative analyst for the City Council. And during his tenure as CLA, uh, Mr. Deaton was referred to as the sixteenth council member, uh, of the City Council for his strong knowledge of policy and how the city works. Uh, Mr. Deaton worked on everything from the city's 911 system, building new parks in every part of the city, and developing, uh, library services so children... so children and adults everywhere, regardless of income level, would have access to them. He was also very instrumental in historical restoration in the city, including the Point Farm and Lighthouse, the Pueblo, and City Hall. In 2004, he became General Manager of DDP and held this position until he retired from city service in 2007. I started working in this building in 1996 for Councilmember Joel Wax. And I remember watching Mr. Deaton as he went from council member to council member. And whenever the city or an individual council member faced a problem, they always turned to Ron. When I saw him speaking to a council member, I would look at any motion that came out of that office because I knew that Ron knew where every single pot of money was in the city. And I would immediately look into those funds. He was a mentor to so many of the people who actually still work in the city. He was a leader, and even though I did not work for him, I learned so much from him and how to get things done in the city. It's a big loss to us, for those who knew him. He is survived by his wife Ellery, his brother Gary, and his wife Joy, his children David, Daniel, Deidra, and Dara, as well as their spouses and twelve grandchildren. May Mr. Ron Deaton rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. If you can please include all members on that adjourned motion? Thank you. Mr. Blumenfield?
I didn't realize I pressed it, but let me just say about, about Deaton. I got to know him when I was a staffer in Congress back in the early 90s and late 80s. And he came to, to Washington, and we would talk about the city and, and had a relationship with him ever since. And he was, he was an amazing person. It is a big loss for this city because he really, he really helped make this city what it is today. So, thank you for including me and all the other council members on this motion.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions, members? Can you see none? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
So, it's really rewarding.
Hearing the stories of the clients that are here made me really understand that there's, you know, different situations that people go through.
These volunteers took to heart their civic duty calling and became our everyday heroes.
Never, it was never a boring day as a disaster service worker. It can be really tiring. It can be really draining. But it's also really fulfilling, too, being out there in the community, helping out.
A lot of appreciation for what I have. Many times I think that you're, you don't have much in life. But when you get to actually work with those who are less fortunate this time, it has definitely made me appreciate life in itself.
People know that even in the most difficult times, they still have ways to help them. Like they still, they still have us to help them, and they're not alone.
Thank you so much to the more than 2,500 L.A. city employees who have served as disaster service workers and to all those who will serve in the weeks ahead.
During the COVID pandemic, we need all hands on deck, and you are a valuable set of hands for us. In fact, I consider you part of our public safety team.
You who served as disaster service workers went beyond the call of duty to ensure that our most vulnerable and neediest neighbors were taken care of.
You've really stood tall. You've really provided leadership in a moment of crisis. And you've really been the better angels of the city.
I often tell everybody how much city workers are really dedicated to the city, and you have proved that once again with your actions.
You are all superheroes among many heroes in our community.
As a disaster service worker during the COVID-19 pandemic, there is no more important work than you are doing right now.
We cannot do anything without you, and we really appreciate all the valuable contributions. You've really helped our most vulnerable Angelenos through this very difficult time.
Your commitment to your city and your neighbors is a credit to all city workers.
Your selfless actions, working at the test centers, Project Rimkey, and the many other DSW assignments have served the city and the many Angelenos in need during these difficult times.
You embody what it is to be a city employee. Your work and dedication is critical to the city of Los Angeles in this time of need.
What you do during the summer set at 10:00 is very essential and very important to the city.
Putting shelters over our homeless community, providing food to our senior citizens, you are saving lives. We're so proud of you.
I see you, and I appreciate so much as somebody who lives in the city of L.A. and who loves the city of Los Angeles, your service to your city.
The testing site, helping older Angelenos at a senior meals hotline, or assisting those who are experiencing homelessness at a shelter.
You've made a huge difference in the daily lives and saved probably many lives throughout this pandemic.
Just wanted to thank all of you disaster service workers for your great efforts in helping the city of Los Angeles.
I really want to thank the over 185 employees from the Bureau of Engineering who have served as disaster service workers.
So on behalf of the 4 million residents we all serve, thank you for your selflessness, your dedication, and being angels in this city of angels.
And from my team to yours, I want to say, thank you!
I really want to thank you. You are the best of Los Angeles.
Offer you a big virtual hug and a super mil gracias and a very heartfelt thank you.
Thank you all again.
So again, you have our deepest gratitude.
On behalf of myself and the Information Technology Agency, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing.
From every department around the city, thank you.
I am so proud of you, so proud to serve alongside you as a city employee. Thank you so much.
Your work is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You are an example of why Los Angeles is called the City of Angels. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone.
Thank you so very much.
Thanks to all of you.
On behalf of your colleagues, we love you. We appreciate you. You are our heroes. Thank you.
We're all so grateful for the city workforce and all the work that you've done throughout this pandemic. Thank you.
Once again, thank you.
We will get through these days together, and we will get through them because of you.
L.A. strong.
L.A. strong.
Ali strong.
L.A. strong.
Ali strong.
L.A. strong.
Owlet strong.
To our everyday heroes, to you we say thank you.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your L.A. DWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the Create a Service Request tab, and this takes you to the Create Service Request page. Under Popular Service Request, right on top of the list is bulky items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the No button and fill out the required information. Check this out. You can hold and drag to move the pin or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the L.A. River, or on vacant lots. Hit the Done button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch Details. You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch Done. If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations, such as next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree. You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit Submit and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an L.A. DWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the City Info icon. You can either enter an address or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include City Bill Pay and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.